Good evening, everyone. Welcome to beautiful downtown Denison, Texas for the city council meeting of Monday, March 3, 2025. And at this time, we'd like to ask Pastor Drew Svensson to come up and give us our indication for the meeting. Thank you.
Would you pray with me? Heavenly Father, we look to you from whom every good and perfect gift comes from, and we thank you for the many blessings that we have, the freedoms we have in this country, the joys of living in this community. God, how you care for us, and you watch over us, and we are grateful. While we pray for those in our local city, God, who make laws, who protect us, I pray for the mayor and his office, if you're blessing upon him. For our city council, give them wisdom, discernment, and they continue to govern our city in a way that would honor you and would love our neighbor well. Thanks for those in law enforcement, the fire department, who protect and serve. May your grace rest upon them, and even those from our community who are abroad, protecting the freedoms we have, the military, may your favor rest upon them as well. That's our meeting tonight, and may it bring glory to you in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you. If you'll remain standing for just a moment, I'm going to read these names of troop 403, and we're so proud to have them tonight. They'll lead us in our pledge of allegiance. We have troop members Pascal Pudal, Sam Nunley, Travis McAllister, Benton Hunter, and Travis Hunter. And our scout leaders tonight are Penny Pudal, Leslie McAllister, and Stephen Walker. If you all would come up and help us with the pledge, please.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the excellent light, our pledge of allegiance to be existent, one state, under God, one indivisible.
And if you all don't mind, just kind of back up towards us. We want to get a picture with you and the council, if you will kind of come towards me. Let's have the scouts a few minutes. All right, thank you, gentlemen and ladies. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. One may be seated. For item two on our agenda, we have a proclamation this evening for Autism Awareness and Acceptance Month. So all of you, any of you that would like to join me, I'm going to come down here and read our proclamation. We are just so proud to have you here with us tonight, and it's our honor to read and present this proclamation. It says, whereas autism is a complex disorder that affects an estimated one in every thirty-six children in the United States, including many individuals and families in the city of Denison. And whereas Autism Awareness and Acceptance Month provides an opportunity to celebrate the unique strengths, talents, and contributions of individuals with autism while also promoting greater understanding, inclusion, and support within our community. And whereas early diagnosis, intervention, and access to appropriate services and support are vital in helping individuals with autism lead fulfilling and independent lives. And whereas the city of Denison is proud to recognize the organization's educators, advocates, and caregivers who work tirelessly to improve the lives of individuals with autism and who raise awareness and advocate for inclusiveness in schools, workplaces, and society at large. And whereas by promoting awareness, acceptance, and inclusion, we strengthen the fabric of our community and ensure that every individual has the opportunity to thrive and succeed. Now therefore, I, Robert Crowley, Mayor of the City of Denison, do hereby proclaim April 2025 as Autism Awareness and Acceptance Month. And in the city of Denison, encourage all citizens to join in efforts to increase awareness, show support for individuals with autism and their families, and work toward a community that values and embraces neurodiversity and witness whereof. I heretofore set my hand and have cause to be affixed the seal of the City of Denison on this third day of March 2025. It's my pleasure to present this to you, and we just really appreciate it. Fifteen, sixteen of you.
And it's just some of us.
But well, it's our pleasure, and we just, we support you a hundred percent and know that there are helps and cures out there that one day will all be able to enjoy. So anyway, we appreciate it.
I just need to be on my seven. It's our pleasure, Robert Crowley, city council members, and distinguished guests. Thank you for this incredible honor and for recognizing April as Autism Awareness Month here at Denison. On behalf of the Owen Foundation, the families we serve, and the incredible individuals in our autism community, I accept this proclamation with immense gratitude and great appreciation. For many families, including my own, Mrs. Owen, my son, and my husband Ronnie, and our other son, Carter. For many families, including my own, autism is not just a diagnosis, it is a journey of love, learning, and advocacy. My son Owen has been my greatest teacher, showing me the beauty of seeing the world through a different lens. And through him, I've learned that awareness is just the beginning. True impact comes from acceptance, inclusion, and action, which we check here tonight. This proclamation is more than words on paper. It is a promise. I promise that Denison is a place where individuals with autism are valued, where families are supported, and where inclusion isn't just an idea but a way of life. I want to express my deepest thanks to the city leaders, the community members, and every advocate who has helped to make this happen. Your commitment to autism awareness and acceptance will create lasting change, not just this month or April, but all year long. At the Owen Foundation, we believe every child deserves to be seen, supported, and celebrated. And today, because of this proclamation, we take one step closer to making that happen. Thank you for standing with us, for recognizing this level of cause, and for being a community that leads with compassion, together we are in difference. Thank you.
At this time, we'll move to agenda item number three, public comments. The citizens may speak on action items listed on our agenda. A request to speak card should be completed and returned to city clerk prior to arrival. Prior to the council reaching the public section comments of the agenda, citizen comments are limited to three minutes. Unless otherwise required by law, comments related to public hearings below will be heard when the specific hearing starts. Now, I have one card here. Are there any other cards? Madam Clerk? Okay. So this is Mr. Johnson. Okay. Do you want to speak on the item regarding the Encore? Okay. That will be in just a moment, so we'll wait for that item before we call you up, if that's okay. All right. The next item, item number four on our agenda, is the consent agenda for March the 3, 2025.
Mayor, I would move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's a motion by Mayor Protem Adams and a second by Councilman Thomas. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, now, we are to item number five, which is our public hearings. And the first item, number A, will be presented by Robert Lay, City of Denison, regarding 116 North Lynn Avenue in the city of Denison. Mr. Lay?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. It's good to see you all. This public hearing is for the assessing of a lien against 116 North Lynn Avenue for the city's cost to demo, a unsafe site. As you can see in the photo there, in May of 2024, the property suffered a catastrophic loss due to a fire. The property owners were unable to fund the cleanup of the property, but they did sign releases allowing the city to perform the work. They were notified at the time that they would be invoiced for the work and a lien filed for any non-payment. And they did not, were unable to make that payment. The city ended up completing the demo and cleanup in late August of 2024. We did have to delay this process of assessing a lien because at the time, the property had a homestead exemption, so we had to delay till 2025, when the exemption fell off of the property. At the February 3 council meeting, a resolution was passed setting today's date as the meeting for this public hearing. Staff is recommending assessing a lien totaling $8,474.44 against the property. I am present for any questions.
All right, thank you. Questions from council?
Do you know if this home has any other liens on it?
It does. There is a loan from an HVAC company out of Tennessee who funded putting in a new system prior to it burning down, so they additionally have a lien against that property.
There's no mortgages associated with it, was it?
I'm sorry?
Was there a mortgage on that property?
No.
Any other questions from council? If not, this is a public hearing, and at this time, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak for or against this item A under the public hearings? If not, the public hearing is closed. Any other discussion from council? All right, is there a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve an ordinance finding the reasonable, whatever that word is, of the cost of demolition of a structure situated at 116 North Lynn in the city of Denison, Texas, to abate a public nuisance levy and assessment of the cost totaling $8,474.44 against the real estate and assessing the amount of the cost for such demolition as a lien against such real property.
A second. Motion by Mayor Protem Adams, a second by Councilman Redwine. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Go to item number B. Receive report, hold discussion, and continue the public hearing and take action on an ordinance to rezone approximately 6.2 acres near Harbor Road and Highway 84 for planned development overlay district to the light industrial district to allow for an electric substation. Ms. Tate?
Good evening, Mayor and council. At our last council meeting, the request came from the applicant to delay the public hearing until this evening, and so at this time, we will continue that public hearing. As a reminder, this 6.2 acre tract is located within the planned development of Preston Harbor. It is to be used for an electrical substation via Encore. The parcel is currently located across the street from some light industrial storage with some residential behind that area. The planned development standards do not list an electrical substation as a use, and that's why it's coming back before you. So we are requesting to rezone the light industrial, or the planned development district to light industrial to allow for the electrical substation. If you recall, this station will have to be landscaped. It will have to meet all of the development standards that are required within Chapter 28, so it will have a masonry wall around it. Encore is present for any questions this evening, and they can speak to why that location was selected. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer those at this time.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Tate? If not, is Representative Encore here? We'd love to hear from you, sir. Please come up.
Mayor, the public hearing should be open.
Give me one second. The public hearing is now open for item B on our agenda tonight. Is there anyone who would like to speak on behalf of this project? And just please give us your name.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and council. My name is Seth Sampson. I'm the siding specialist for Encore, represent Encore in our entitlement in zoning cases across the state or our territory. Yeah, as described, first of all, I appreciate you guys waiting for us to show up tonight to discuss this. We like to be present to answer any questions when we were stretched thin a couple of weeks ago, so I appreciate you taking on it to this night. It was briefly mentioned that this is a zoning case for a distribution level substation. The need is to address the load growth in this region, specifically this northern Denison region, and that is, that's the reason for this station today. I'm here to answer any questions that you might have for us and further describe any questions that you may have. So I'll stick around and wait for any questions from you or the residents and tenants.
Okay. Any questions from council? I have one, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
Can you describe just a little bit about the mason wall and the landscaping that will go into this project?
Sure. So the masonry screen wall, it's an eight-foot masonry screen wall. It's standard for all of our stations. It helps provide some screening from our equipment, but it also provides protection for us. And then the masonry, or the landscaping, we were able to fit in areas that aren't encumbered by lines. That's both transmission and distribution. For obvious reasons, we can't put landscaping under our electric facilities, but our landscape experts have worked with staff to meet the landscape requirements that will be required to provide. We do have height restrictions on what that landscaping can be, and we have, we have a list of approved, I guess, trees, shrubs that we do, we do allow, and we match that up as best with your guys' landscaping that we can.
So it won't just be open where we can see all the structures and...
We try not to, no. But again, just to be clear, anywhere there are lines, there won't be trees in those.
How tall is the masonry wall?
Eight feet.
I know when we did a substation out on Highway 131, it ended up looking very nice, and we appreciated that as a community.
Yep. What was that, two years ago about, I think? Okay.
Will the masonry wall help with any noise reduction or anything?
So we typically don't really get noise complaints with the stations. We've all driven under transmission lines, which are, they exist out there currently. That's really what you, when you do hear noise, that they're coming from the transmission lines. And it's really weather dependent as well. Usually, if you get an extremely hot and humid day, that's when you'll hear any increased audible noises. We don't get a ton of those in this region. You get a lot down in Louisiana and down the Houston area, but those type of weather event days are kind of when you potentially hear the audible noise from the lines and station, but it will help some. If you're standing right next to it on a really hot day, you'll be able to hear it. But the equipment that we do have today just keeps getting better and keeps improving with that type of audible sound that you can sometimes hear, so.
Any other questions?
I'll stick around.
All right. Thank you very much, sir. And is there anyone else here who would like to speak in favor or against the proposal? Mr. Johnson, did you want to speak? Thank you for being here, sir. If you could just tell us your name and address, please.
My name is Stan Johnson. I live at 101 Diamond Point Loop off of Hannah Drive. Our family's had property in that area for seventy years or so. I just want to encourage the council to move on with this. We know it's inevitable, and we've been watching it, waiting for that to happen, and I think it's time. I encourage you to vote in favor of this.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am, come on up.
My name is Liberty Johnson. I hope that you've all received the email that I sent Friday. No relation to Mr. Johnson ever here. However...
Could you just give us your address, please?
Oh, I'm at 152 Harbor Road, which happens to be right across the street from where the substation's going in, which is less than fifty feet from our property. So there are concerns with this. I have done an open records request with very little result, but part of the reporting on the analysis report stating that it's primarily underdeveloped or undeveloped property as well as commercial. Our home is 4,600 square feet. It is not commercial, and there's another house next to us that's also not commercial. These two properties are directly across the street from this facility. We're not denying that there needs to be a facility. What we are all in question of, including others within our subdivision, we are wondering what other locations were looked at for consideration because a lot of the bullet points that were in line with the analysis are not lining up, and we stand to lose forty-four, up to 44.9% of the value of our property based on the location of this. Unless the city wants to buy it out, I mean, which we can negotiate, but we would rather not. I moved here to call Denison home. I get we are the quote-unquote stepchild of Denison. We are the unincorporated. But as the indication that you opened this meeting with did say, for us to love our neighbors, we are still a neighbor, and we are accepting of the fact that this development is going in. But I also have concerns of what our investment is going to end up being impacted. From my understanding how this reads, this substation will not benefit the unincorporated area of Grayson County. It does read as though it's pretty much exclusively to the development, but it's going to be tethered into the existing cables that feed and supply power to our subdivision in the unincorporated area. And if you're not too familiar with that area, if somebody blows the match the wrong way, the power goes out. It's pretty unstable, and we are concerned over risks that will come into that. But more importantly, we cannot afford to lose the value that's in our house or in our properties. And being within a hundred feet of that, we are guaranteed to lose a minimum of forty percent based on, I have cited references if y'all needed them. So I would like to ask that y'all do consider, instead of just putting the pen to paper tonight to rezone and allow this, I would hope that we could reconsider other locations within that development. At the 3,000-plus acres, there's got to be something that's not going to be as intrusive.
Thank you for your comments. Any questions or comments? Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor or against this project? If not, Sampson, could I ask you another question, if you don't mind? Is this project specifically to serve only the Preston Harbor area, or is it supposed to serve all of northwest Denison?
Yeah, no, this is for the overall region. It's not specifically to serve one neighborhood or oncoming customer. We have a, we have a separate department that deals with just customer stations, but this is not that. This is for the overall grid resiliency. And this was part of our, or brought to us by our load and our demand growth team, and it's not driven by one customer.
All right, thank you. The city is moving forward with sewer and water to that area, and we intend for our service to be for all of northwest Denison, not for just this 3,000 acres. It's a parcel of that, so I just wanted to clear that. Also, is there any way that this substation could help neighbors like Ms. Johnson with a little bit more dependable power, or is that, will it not affect them?
Sure. So not knowing exactly where she lives, but if they're in our service territory and it's in this region, this substation is coming online for that service territory region.
Yeah, she just lives right across the street from where it's going.
Okay, yeah. So if you're in our service territory in north, in this north region, it essentially, it's going to harden and make that area more resilient. What, so, yeah, so right across the street. Again, this is a distribution substation, so you ask in an event. So what it does not do, it doesn't generate more electricity. It's strictly for distribution. So we take the transmission, the high demand, high load off of the transmission lines. The substation essentially breaks it down into a load that you can use to feed a house or a home. That's what it does. It doesn't generate additional electricity, so just to make that clear. Without knowing a specific event, I'd never play hypothetical on what could potentially cause an outage event, but what I can say is that this is the best tool we have, and it is a very diverse tool to, if there is an event. It gives us many more options than what are currently there today. So in that sense, it does help the resiliency and the dependability in the area.
Is there, is there any chance that you could have someone look into the disconnectivity that Ms. Johnson notices when there's a storm that comes through? I live in a neighborhood where our power is also interrupted on occasion when a storm comes through. You have a different division that can, somebody that can maybe just look through there and see if it's tree trimming or anything like that?
Sure, yeah. We, and I can put you in the contact with our area manager for this district. We all, all of our service territories have area managers that they can, they're more knowledgeable and about more specific to their region and the cities that they serve. So that'd be where we could start. Yeah, that's absolutely something we can do.
If you would maybe further that up wherever that needs to go, I'd appreciate that for Ms. Johnson. If, if you would maybe further that up, wherever that needs to go, I'd appreciate that for Ms. Johnson.
Sure.
Notice, in our neighborhood, Ms. Johnson, we had, uh, recent notices on our door hanging, door hanging notices that said that tree trimmers would be in the neighborhood. And typically when we lose power, it's typically from trees that have grown up and that get tangled into the lines. But it seems like that, that can and does happen in our community with the, with the beautiful foliage that we have.
And, and specifically towards the, the, the line, um, situation that you did just bring up? So one of the things that our demand and our load planners look at when we're citing one of these stations is, um, the adjacency to other substations and the amount of exposed lines. So essentially, if you look at this, um, if you have Substation A and Substation B here, we try to locate new Substation C right in the middle. So what that does is, it's, it's Texas, we get tornadoes, right? We get bad weather. You're essentially cutting the exposure of whatever line you may have been on in between in half by locating in the middle. And that's, that's one of the many points that we, uh, that we do when we cite these stations.
That makes sense. Yes, ma'am?
I'm sorry, I've got to ask, how did y'all determine this location?
So we have, we have a team of, I mean, to come to this specific location, honestly, more people than are in this room that look at the determination on when we come to decide where we're going to put these stations. It, it has engineering, it has electrical engineering, civil engineering. But a couple of key points that we, we do need to abide by when we're, when we're purchasing property for these stations. One, we need to be next to an existing transmission line. There's an existing transmission line at this intersection here. Two, we need to be able to locate a willing property owner that the property is at a fair price, fair market value or close to. We, despite what some people may think, we, we have to be prudent in what we spend on these pieces of property. They all get, um, they all get put back into the rate base and that's something that the state watches. So we do have to have a, a reasonable piece of property that we can develop. Three, I briefly mentioned kind of the point A, point B, point C. It, it doesn't do us any good to place a substation typically right next to an existing substation. And it needs to be located in an area that we know is going to have high growth or that we're seeing high growth. So, um, those are, those are kind of just the high points of what we look into when we're looking at these, these properties. I, I can say that when we come into an area and look at properties, that we're not just saying, okay, that one, that's easy. We, we comb the area, we look at hundreds of properties in the area when we're, when we're looking at it, so as, from a real estate perspective.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions from council?
I'd like to ask Ms. Johnson, our concern is the deterioration of her property values. What, do you not think that that development will increase your property value?
Absolutely not with a five acre substation right across the street. When I say it's right across the street, we are less than forty-six point eight feet from their property line that they're putting this in.
Ms. Johnson, how long have you had this property?
Two thousand twelve.
Okay. I see your concerns, um, you know, as a person that was looking for a home in the Preston Harbor Division, I probably wouldn't want to be right near a substation. But I, I do believe to your point, Teresa, that since two thousand twelve and really since the past three years and the news of this coming out, that the property substantially has increased just since we've, you know, released the news of this development. But I do see your concerns, though.
If I may. Sorry, ma'am, could you not move the microphone? Some property on the other side, they're selling the lots for a hundred thousand.
Right.
If they bet it, it's going to drop it to property.
And even the property, what she was saying was the property on the southeast corner of Hannah and eighty-four, they have lots for sale. I believe they have ten at ninety-nine thousand dollars per lot. They have not sold any. So with their view, they're going to be overlooking the substation and I guess the water wa, or wastewater facility as well. But in terms of property value, um, I actually have cited references, the appraisal journal and several that were saying in close proximity to a substation. Depending on where you are located on that substation, you can lose anywhere between ten to forty-four point nine percent of your property value. And considering that we have an already unique dwelling, it's, it does, it is a barn dominium. And, um, like I said, forty-six hundred or close to forty-six hundred square feet with an attached twenty-three hundred square foot shop. It is not commercial property. If it was, then I would hopefully get different taxes than what I'm seeing. If you're wanting the cited, is that what you're wanting, the cited?
I mean, you're speculating about land value after a substation goes in, you know.
So I'm going through all the narratives and the. Regardless, I mean, I, I would definitely ask y'all, would you buy a house that's fifty feet from wastewater? And an electrical substation? I'm just saying that would be close to two hundred thousand loss in property value.
Potentially.
I'm sorry?
Potentially.
Would you want to buy my house? I'm happy to sell it.
I'm not looking for a house.
Yeah, well, so what exactly are these sources again? Cause I mean, that is.
There's the appraisal journal and, hang on.
Appraisal journal, is that like a, a research journal or what?
Yeah, I have the whole two hundred page document on a thumb drive, but I did not want to print all of that out. And there was a real estate group. I'm wondering if it's, I may have just set it down on my seat.
Well, there, there are going to be multiple options in places you can look for values. But anyway, I, I, I think we get the point that she's done quite a bit of research. And in her opinion, her value may go down.
Okay. So sorry, it was from the Journal of Real Estate Research. vacant lots, so for an average, uh, forty-four point nine less than the equivalent lots without a substation. That would be in reference to the southeast corner of Hannah and eighty-four. And with close proximity, the appraisal journey and, or journal in two thousand twenty, as well as the Counselors of Real Estate, volume thirty-nine, number two, in two thousand fourteen, state the same, um, loss assessed within the substation of proximity. So with us, like I said, within fifty feet, it wouldn't be the case for those that live a quarter of a mile away and they have no line of sight to it.
Well, I think, uh, I think Encore is, is trying to do their best by putting up the eight foot fence and landscaping as best they can. I don't know that, uh, that, I kind of have the feeling that as that area develops out there, I think everyone's appraisals will go up based on the square footage of the home. That's typically how.
I can hope, and I hope it wouldn't be hyperinflated by the county. The only analogy I can give you all is if you look at a great store, grocery store or whatever, it looks great on the front. Then you get to the back, the hidden area, and that's where this, this area of the whole development is starting to look like the back of the grocery store where all the sludge and all the messes and the stink. That is pretty much what it's being looked at as far as people in our subdivision. They don't feel like they're, the people of Denison care. So I did promise them I would do my best, even if I'm the lone wolf. But at this point, we're going to be forced to sell. So, and that's based on this decision alone.
Okay, thank you for your comments and we appreciate, uh, your time. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of or opposed to, uh, this substation? If not, uh, the public meeting is closed and go back to council. Council, questions, comments? If not, is there a motion?
Mayor, I would move to approve an ordinance rezoning the subject property from a planned development overlay district to light industrial to accommodate an electrical substation.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Protem Adams, the second by Councilman Thomas. Any other questions, comments, discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries. We'll now move to item six, item four, individual considerations. Ms. Lori Alsaball, could you please come up? Good evening, thank you.
Um, each year, the city works with a municipal advisor when issuing debt to fund our yearly approved projects. Um, for the series twenty, twenty-five B and C issuances that we're currently working on through the Texas Water Development Board, uh, we are required to solicit proposals for, uh, financial advisor services in order to satisfy, uh, procurement laws. Only one proposal was received from Hilltop Securities and we are requesting approval for the city to enter into an agreement, uh, for them to assist us with the funding.
All right, thank you. Any questions?
Oh, I'm, yeah, I'm here to answer any questions you may have. Sorry.
Any, any questions for item six A from Ms. Alsaball? All right, if not?
I, I have one, what, is that common to have just one, one proposal presented?
That's for the, uh, financial advisor or municipal advisor. We will also have another one on the, um, coming up next.
Any other questions, comments? Is there a motion?
Mayor, I would move to approve entering into a municipal advisory agreement, contract number twenty twenty-five dash zero zero two four with Hilltop Securities for financial advisor services to assist with the financing through the Texas Water Development Board and authorize the interim city manager to execute the same.
Second.
A motion by Mayor Protem Adams, second by Councilman Courtright. Any other questions, comments, discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries, item B. Ms. Alsaball, I'm glad you didn't go sit in.
Uh, similar to the previous item, the city also works with a public finance attorney referred to as bond counsel to provide legal assistance with our funding. For the Texas Water Development Board financing, we were also required to solicit proposals. And two proposals were received and staff is requesting approval for the city to enter into an agreement with McCall Parkhurst and Horton LLC to provide legal assistance. I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions? If not, is there a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve entering into a contract with McCall Parkhurst and Horton, contract number twenty twenty-five dash zero zero two five, to provide bond counsel services to assist with the financing through the Texas Water Development Board and authorize the interim city manager to execute the same.
Second.
Again, we have a motion by Mayor Protem Adams, and a second by Councilman Courtright. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Alsaball. You may now find these comfortable seats. And Mr. Frer, if you could come up, please, for item C on our individual consideration. Talking about a bid for the SYB Construction Company, um, for on-call pipeline maintenance and repair services.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. The item I have for your consideration tonight is the award of a big contract with SYB Construction for on-call pipeline maintenance and repair services. The big contract complies with city purchasing policy and will provide staff an additional resource to assist us in pipeline repairs and maintenance as needed when the scope of the repair exceeds our resources and utilities. The cost of the contract is not, is a not to exceed amount. All work under the contract will be authorized at the appropriate level and all expenses will be within budgetary limitations. The scope and, scope of the contract includes repairs to water pipelines up to twenty-four inches in size and sewer and stormwater pipelines up to forty-two inches in size. Associated infrastructure such as water valves, sewer manholes and, and items like that are also included in the contract scope. The term of the contract is from March twenty twenty-five to September twenty twenty-six. And I'd like to add that SYB Construction has been a, a pretty great partner with Public Works thus far in some of our CIP projects. So really excited to partner with them again on this, uh, pipeline and maintenance repair contract. I'd be happy to take any questions y'all may have.
Questions? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Any discussion from council? If not, is there a motion?
I move to award the bid and enter into, into a contract with SYB Construction Company Incorporated for on-call pipeline maintenance and repair services for an amount not to exceed one million eight hundred and thirty-one thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars and authorize this interim city manager to execute all related documents subject to final review and approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Redwine, a second by Councilman Thomas. Any other questions, comments? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, same side. Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Alsaball, I'm glad you didn't go far because you get the lucky number D.
Yeah, sorry I stood there so awkwardly earlier. I forgot I was getting a break between my items. Okay, so pricing occurred today on our combination tax and limited surplus revenue certificates of obligation, series twenty twenty-five A. This is to secure fifty-one point nine million dollars in funding that will cover water sewer projects, our D three, streetscape, fire station designs and repairs to Waterloo Pool. So Marty Shu with Hilltop Securities, um, our financial advisor, is here this evening to go over the pricing and to answer any questions you may have.
Welcome. Looks like we have homework.
Yep.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that's when dinner's first been ready.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Marty Shu with Hilltop Securities. Would you represent the city as your financial advisor? Pleasure to be here tonight to report the results of your bond sale and thank you as well for approving our contract to continue working with you on your Texas Water Development Board transactions. So the book list I prepared for you today, uh, just summarized the results of the sale. Your bonds were sold through a competitive sale. And what that means is they were put out on the open market and any and all underwriters were invited to submit a bid for the right to purchase and sell your bonds to the public. And our tabs are kind of out of order. If I had prepared this myself, I would have put tab B first. But if you'll, if you'll bear with me and go to tab B, we actually have the full list of the bid results for you. And I am pleased to report that the city had very favorable market interest. You had eleven different bidders and PNC Capital Markets came in with the lowest proposed true interest cost of a three point seven nine percent. It's an excellent rate. Just to give you an idea, we normally like to see a minimum of three bids. That's what we would consider a successful sale. So as you can see, you're well above that. I think in very interesting factoid as well, I went back and looked at some of your prior sales and, um, your last transaction that was the same size and length was in two thousand twenty-three and you actually had a three seventy-nine rate as well. So as you can imagine, on our marketplace and the headlines and all the geopolitical issues and things going on, we've had so much volatility. So I think to have that kind of stability in terms of pricing across your issues really speaks to the strength of the city's name in the bond market. So tab A, flipping kind of backwards, we have graphed that rate against the bond buyers index. This is a third party index that we use to track municipal market conditions over time. We honestly haven't been able to graph transactions against this rate over the last couple of years because of all the volatility. There's been so many anomalies. But they release a weekly rate that we use as kind of a benchmark. And the weekly rate right now is a four point one five percent. So as you can see, you came in well below that. So again, very favorable results. And the primary reason for this, um, is the strength of the underlying credit ratings of the city. So as part of the normal bond issuance process, the city had to apply for and purchase a bond rating. Staff has to sit down and provide a lot of information, answer a lot of questions. The rating agencies, there's two companies, S and P Global, Standard and Poor's, name is interchangeable, and Fitch Ratings are the two, uh, companies that were engaged to come in and do a full credit assessment. Ratings are the two, uh, companies that were engaged to come in and do a full credit assessment. So again, they go through everything, and, um, I'm pleased to report that they did both affirm, uh, S and P, or S and P Global affirmed the double A minus credit rating, and Fitch affirmed it at the double A. So Fitch has you one notch higher than S and P, but I think both, it's very significant to note that you're in a very elite category of ratings. So from Fitch, you're only two notches away from a perfect score, and S and P, you're only three notches away. And this is important because the credit ratings in the city are much like you or I, our own personal credit ratings. So the higher your personal credit rating, the lower the cost of borrowing when you go to apply for a mortgage or purchase a car. Same holds true for the city. So the higher your credit rating, the lower their cost of borrowing translates to when you go to issue debt. Each of these agencies do release a full report in connection with the assignment of the ratings, and we have included those reports for you behind tab C. I encourage you guys to read those in, in their entirety. Uh, they do focus on the strength of the financial flexibility and the management of the city. So all in all, very favorable results. This is the final step of the bond issuance process, so by adopting the ordinance before you tonight, you're effectively accepting this proposal, locking these rates into place for the life of the debt that will be fixed over the twenty-year period. And then the bonds will go to the Attorney General for their approval, and you'll receive the funds on, um, March nineteenth. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thanks. Fantastic ratings. Thank you very much for all you do on that, uh, to help us get to that point, but, uh, it's the staff that helps us get to our ultimate rating, and we thank all of the staff for all that you do, and thank you, Mr. Manager. We appreciate it. Um, any questions, Ms. Shu? All right. If not, is, uh, is there a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance authorizing the issuance of the city's combination tax and limited surplus revenue certificates of obligation, Series twenty, twenty-five A, approving and authorizing instruments and procedures relating to said certificates and enacting other provisions relating to the subject.
Second.
Back to this end of the table, we have a motion by Mayor Protem Adams and a second by Councilman Courtright. Any other discussion, questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. We have two more items under section six. However, we are still waiting on some information from the Attorney General. And Ms. Alsaball, if you could please say a comment?
And I believe we were going to combine those two items since they are, um, one of two parts of the same project. Um, so if you recall at our last meeting on February seventeenth, we tabled authorizing the issuance, or the ordinance for the issuance of the Texas Water Development Board funding, Series twenty, twenty-five, um, B and C. Um, this is the low-interest principal forgiveness loan that the Texas Water Development Board is financing, uh, that we're financing through to help with the lead service line replacement program that we are required to, um, to, to do. Um, we are once again requesting that these, uh, ordinances be tabled until the next meeting, uh, pending legal, or Attorney General review and approval.
Okay, thank you. And that, this is going to apply to item E and F of Agenda Item Number Six. So, uh, we, we would like to table these until the next meeting, which is March the seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five at six P M. Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Is there a motion on, uh, items E and F to table?
Mayor, I move to approve tabling items six E and F of the agenda until March seventeenth at six P M.
A second.
Oh, bouncing out here. Okay, I'm going to give that, leave that to the Mayor Protem for the motion, and, uh, Mr. Councilman Redwine for the second. Any other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, we're now at item number seven. And for those of you in our audience who may not, uh, have been here before, um, pursuant, pursuant to chapter five-five-one of the Texas Government Code, the council reserves the right to convene into executive session from time to time, as deemed necessary due to this meeting, to receive legal advice from its attorney on any posted Agenda item as permitted by law, or to discuss the following. Item A, consult with attorney on a matter in which the attorney's duty to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional con, conduct conflicts with this chapter and or consult with an attorney about pending or contemplated, contemplated litigation or contemplated settlement of the issue, section five-five-one point zero-seven-one. So items one and two, number one is confer with city attorney regarding surplus properties located at four-twenty-eight East Woodard and at seven-twenty-one West Purnell. And then item two, to confer with the attorney is regarding amending a state law for use of hotel occupancy taxes and or sales taxes for qualified projects and resolutions supporting amendment of the Texas Tax Code. The time now is six fifty-six, and the council will adjourn to executive session, and I'm going to say that we won't be out too long, but you're welcome to stay. But if you're ready to go home, you're welcome to go home as well. Ladies and gentlemen, the time is seven twenty-three, and, uh, we'll, uh, declare the, the council session reopened from executive session. On item one, uh, there's no action taken. In item number two, uh, we will take some action, and we have a resolution, uh, that's been presented to approve to pay or use, uh, a tax plan under the code three-fifty-one, and I'll, uh, ask for a resolution from the Mayor Protem.
Mayor, I have a motion to approve Resolution number forty-one dash nine-five, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Houston, Texas, urging the Texas Legislature to adopt legislation amending the Texas Tax Code, Chapter three-fifty-one, Municipal Hotel Occupancy Taxes, Subchapter C.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mayor Protem Adams, a second by Councilman Thomas. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. So the time is now seven twenty-four. Was it seven twenty-three while ago?
Yeah.
Okay. Seven twenty-four, and so if there's no further business, so this, uh, council meeting of March the third, twenty-twenty-five is adjourned.